All right, tonight is Monday, August 23rd, 2021, at 6:00 PM. And the upper area school board meeting is being held in the Susan Tully Labs Boardroom of the 1887 building. Could we, I think I called it order, roll call.
Mrs. Fisher.
Here.
Mr. Gehart.
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Here.
Mr. Martel.
Here.
Well, now that Mr. O'Donnell cannot join us this evening. Mrs. Ray.
Here.
And Mr. Scarrow.
Here.
We have a forum. This is, notice, meeting been noticed for state statute. I'm going to sue and pass?
Yes.
Thank you. Community participation, do we have community participation tonight? Okay.
I did not receive any email requests to have anything ready.
All right, so we're going to dispense with reading that. We go on to approval of the school board minutes for the regular session of, obviously, ninth, 2021. Has everybody read them, somebody comments or changes? Carrying done. So, does anyone have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes of the August 9th, 2021 regular session, school board meeting as presented.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the regular session of the school board meeting minutes of August 9th, 2021 as presented. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gehart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
That's me.
Motion is carried. General, other fund bills, would you like to talk about that, Mr. Trillin?
The general other fund bills this evening, coverage checks number 143691 through 143803. Wire transfer and wire numbers, 720 through 725, ACH check numbers, 035 to 050. Option renovation wire number, 719, and one void ACH of 030, in a combined amount of $741,190.70. You'll notice the bills this evening, there are a number of things are in there, including completions of summer projects, and a lot of our supplies and equipment, and software is now coming in in preparation for the school year. And this is also the last payment on the option school renovation project.
Oh, okay, okay. For, um, for CG.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
CG Schmidt, all of a sudden, it's like I see their face, but I can't think of their name. So, I saw that come through.
Yep.
Anyone have any questions or comments about any of the bills?
I have just a couple of questions. So, the west side boiler replacement, and then the high school working projects, they were noted as progress payments.
Correct.
Are those like the first in a series, or do you know which?
Uh, for the boiler project, that is the first.
Okay.
The roofing project, that was the second.
Okay.
And then there's a retainer, I think on the roofing project of either 10 or 20,000, yeah.
Okay, so do you know, like, how many are on each of those, like, how, how many?
Three.
Three, on each, okay.
Yep.
And they're just based on the progress that was made, not necessarily three equal payments?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, I had a question on the PE uniforms.
Oh, yeah.
Wondering if it's the same question as I have. So, we just buy PE uniforms for the middle school, is that, I can't remember, I don't think we have them in elementary, right?
Correct.
And we don't in high school, right?
I believe so, the high school.
So, what, I'm just wondering what the explanation is, is why we do PE uniforms at the middle school?
That's a good question, and I don't want to tell you because we always have.
They have found that it's by doing uniforms, it eliminates the dress code concerns or questions. The high school did do it previously. Chris, that's Chris, I think Chris is on the call. Chris, do you recall the high school, how long ago, or maybe fall, was it that the high school discontinued doing the uniforms?
I think it was three years ago, Jason.
So, I can tell you that up until that point, the primary purpose on uniforms was just.
And how's that going at the high school level, not having uniforms?
Based on my recollection, and maybe Sarah can chime in here, it was not an issue. In fact, Dan worked with Mr. Prince and the other teachers at the time, and they were supportive of it. I think part of it was an equity issue, and just a consistency issue of trying to get kids to dress all the time, and make sure they had their uniform, some kids didn't always have it. So, it just became easier just to allow them to bring their own uniform, they increased their level of participation.
I think a difference between middle school and high school, I don't know how much it impacts the uniform piece or not, but middle school, most kids have PE on a daily basis. High school, it's an elective course, and not a large, personally, the kids have PE on a daily basis.
Okay. And is that something that, is that a fee, it's been too many years, I can't remember that back the part. It's a fee for the parents to pay for the uniforms, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
I sometimes, we call it resale, it's kind of like lots, too.
It's not very expensive.
Well, there was current kind of $15. I think it's $10 for shirts. Yeah, $10 for shirts, $10 for shirts.
Okay, yeah, it used to be seven, so it's not much of an increase. All right. Any other questions or comments? We can entertain a motion regarding the general and other fund bills.
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of August 23rd, 2021. Check numbers, 143691 to 143803. Wire number, 720 to 725, ACH check numbers, 035 to 050. Options renovation wire number, 719, and voided ACH number, 030, in a combined amount of $741,190.70 as presented.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, and a second to approve the general other fund bills of August 23rd, 2021. Checks numbers, 143691 to 143803. Wire number, 720 to 725, ACH check numbers, 035 to 050. Options renovation wire number, 719, and voided ACH number, 030, in a combined amount of $741,190.70 as presented. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gehart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Paul.
Mr. Martel.
Oh, he's muted.
Oh, he's muted?
Yep.
Yes. Yeah, computer problems.
Thank you.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Next agenda item is for report discussion, summer maintenance report.
This is the typical meeting that we share, the kind of progress report on maintenance projects over the summer, and our building's getting ready, and before we do that, though, I've got someone I'd like to introduce. Our new building's a ground supervisor, and he's here tonight, Sinead Amesh. He's here, he's been here, oh, almost over a month now, right?
Over a month.
So.
What's your name again?
Eli.
Eli.
Yep, so, so we're going to kind of take team report here a little bit, and we put some pictures together. We start with Jackson Elementary School. Sure. Stand right up front, do your lighting.
Don't turn the corner.
Got it. And Eli, since it's your first meeting here at the school, why don't you just go on the quick?
Yes, I was going to ask if anybody had a question.
Elevator speech for Eli.
So, I came from a place called St. Augustine Prep, it's a college preparatory academy on the south side of Milwaukee. I was there since it started in 2017, I was the director of buildings, grounds there, plus IT. So, I wore quite a few hats, was obviously one building, 12. But it was, I still live in general stadium, so I was commuting every day up there, enjoyed it. Saw this mission opened up, probably a great opportunity, love the area, live in the area. I've known Jason for quite some time, he's really the guy, heard some amazing things here in Elk Park, so I was excited to hopefully join the team, and I got the opportunity to, so. If you have any specific questions for me, I'm happy to take those, or always you can get on to the presentation.
Well, you could have worked down the microphone, then.
I probably could have, yep. I didn't know we had this hall until today.
I can share with you the short time he's been here. He has immersed himself in the school district in terms of the staff, and very hands-on approach. I think he pitched in on a number of different projects.
Yeah, I don't like to sit in the sidelines, so I like to get in the trenches.
The employees appreciate that.
I hope so.
I really do, I think so, I think that's kind of what we needed.
Yep.
And he's fluent in three languages, two of which are very useful to us. Not a lot of Portuguese in there.
Not a lot of Portuguese in there.
But Spanish and English, yes. Great. So, get on with Jackson Elementary.
Just kind of showcasing the floor and stuff that we get ready every year. It's a big part of custodians' jobs in the summertime is sure thing, maintaining the floors, getting the classrooms ready, and back up to that protective level of floor. Here's kind of a project, either painting, build, working on here, there was some remodels, some cabinets were taken out, and then just some facelifting in that area to make it look more, more appealing.
Which areas is this here?
It's on the house. And back of the library, so it used to be a small computer.
And that wall.
Yeah.
Definitely two separate rooms.
I think the two reading specialists are going to occupy into those spaces now.
That's a really white.
It's like canvas pictures stretched. Up the whole. We have extensive roof repairs this summer, we've been log overdue. They're actually, there's a five-year plan for the whole district to do a lot of the repairs. And this was one of them. One is, are completed, some of the major issues were already completed by IRS. We had that help counteract some of the leaking that was going on in a lot of different buildings. A lot of coping was done, a lot of the re-tire, the roof there, re-capping the thing, so they're not, this is actually pre- before they capped it, so aluminum shrouds on top of that. Then here, too, on the edges, that's fine. So, they put new gravel on top, too, on top of the tar, and then he planned everything to help mitigate this. West side, again, Luis and Jorge did a great job, and their schools are actually almost done. They've got beautiful lights in there now, LEDs throughout that whole building, nice flush mounted ones, we bring out. Rooms out, help improve energy efficiency, too, and then some cleaning and maintaining of rooms. The common space, it's really nice, with the white floor and the LED highways up there. We're actually in the process of doing all that. This was the big boiler leak that we had, so we have boiler crack. That one right there, the last one there, was actually when that cracked. This is during the process of removing all of the old equipment, and so that's all cleared out. And these are, those are the new high efficient boilers, I believe they're somewhere around 95% efficient. So, we're actually going to put in for rebate on those, I don't know if that was done or not, but you can get some money because of the efficiency back. Probably do a now, focus on energy. Here kind of shows, you know, we've got four guns, desks are fully in, the highways up there. I like the west side, especially unique, because it has all the exposed wiring and piping in there. It's very, it's unique to multiple, have a drop ceiling, hides all that. You're able to see it, see the runs and all that, buildings, so it's a really nice slick LED lights that they put in there. They do a great job, this was, again, it's not that wide. That's Brian, we were putting a door in the special ed area, they needed a pass-through there. So, they have one teacher monitor both areas, so the door unfortunately is on wayway. It's going to be here hopefully in October, November, who knows? But it'll look like the door in the background there, the big one, the big window. That's kind of where we're getting, but that's all looking pretty now, we just got finished a paint job, and that's done. Frame's in now, ours is on the door, so.
You may have heard of the RISE program at West Side, and I believe he's probably talked about that, so that's why that industry was created.
Civets, they had all new LEDs put in, just this past couple of weeks, actually, they finished up, two weeks ago. They have a couple little punchless items, we have some power supplies fail, they're going to come in and swap out for us. So, the school looks really nice now with all LEDs in there. Mike's doing a great job, Bill's got smart boards mounted, I know Brian and the IT team did a lot of that, get ready. There's kind of a side-by-side shot of the new fixtures, the hallways, the classrooms. They're very, they're flush mounted, they're very thin mounted, because of the uniqueness of the ceilings at the time, they had to find a new way of mounting these different style of lights. It's because there wasn't a good way to re-put in from the existing lights, so. New style they put in, very nice, new floor coverage. The gym right now, too, with the new lights in there. There's Mike, he's doing the floors, I think he's almost done, too, he had just one little small hallway to do, and he's done with his, his old building. Yeah, so the classroom's nice and bright now, compared to what they were before, with the T8s. I don't know that guy, he's in IT, he's putting the new smart boards in in that building, get them all calibrated. And that actually, room was redone, too. Carpet was quit in there, there was cupboards, I think it was a library before, what was that beforehand?
That was a computer lab.
Computer lab. So, we had all the countertops removed out of there, we painted it all up. Used to have, it was tile flooring, now we put carpet in there, carpet squares. And the gym looks great now, too, with the new lights, new highways in there, hallways. The high school, kind of before, next one's after, just painting, the new lockers are painted.
Nice.
The first floor was all.
Chris had been wanting that done for years, so.
That looked sharp.
Is that still a teal thing, but right there, that's, or is that purple, too?
It's a gray.
Oh, it's a gray.
It doesn't quite look that good from that view, but it's a gray color.
Still Mas, do this thing.
That's a, is that a wax backpack system?
So, he kind of traded that out, he took two pieces of equipment, made it into one, so he doesn't have to fill as often. You can do a larger area at one time. Because it holds more wax in those buckets, too. So, yeah. No one else likes them, because they don't put anything on the back. The Mas is resilient, so he isn't. As you can see, there's great results doing that, that's Irma. Wax and stripping in that back hallway is the difference.
Oh, right.
From the back there. And then this was a before picture of the roof, this was pretty bad repair. I know they had a lot of issues with leaking and stuff previously. This project was already pretty terrible before I started, but I didn't even see it, so that means from IRS sent these to us in four pictures.
So, this is the roof over the swimming pool, correct?
No, it's on the.
But we did the swimming pool one last summer.
We did, yeah. This is over the project, we do weight rooms.
Oh, okay.
Kind of backside, so this is kind of in process of working, so you can see the extensive repairs that are being done. On the roof, a lot of towers put on there, this is what it's now.
Nice.
So, huge improvement, one of the nice things about doing something like this is it's a lot of front cost, but helps save money in the backend, too, because if you get leaking coming through, you get mold, you damage equipment, or I got an IT room, you know, that's huge expense, all the switches get burned out, something like that, so, you know, it is an important work to get done before other things start to happen. So, this was a good project to take care of. All the flashing stuff, too. We had a new flag pole on the football field, the one that was just kind of bent on the scoreboard, wasn't up to my standard, so. We got this one installed weeks ago, right behind the elk, looks real nice. We've put a, nice, next picture down, has gravel scattered out of two. It's kind of, you go into the home of the elk's games, it kind of lines up really nice.
It's a great background.
So, we got that all put in, and then we're going to be actually moving the one that's going to be out here at the front of the building, kind of by the memorial, we're going to take that pole, probably put it back by the soccer. So, I guess they'll be using a clip-up one during games, so we got an extra one now, let's replace that, so if they can just relocate it for better use. We did some painting, this was an area that was kind of a trouble there, because it was a two-way, now it's a one-way. And so, kind of to deter people from going fast, indoor parking in these areas, we stripped them off. And then we added some more handicap spots, I know those are kind of short supply, especially during graduation, I heard that's kind of a thing that comes up. So, we added three more handicap spots, made it a little more narrower, help slow people down alongside the speed bumps. Now, we have to showcase the main entryway there. District office, a whole lot happened in the district office, besides we had this trail of asphalt back here, kind of wraps around it all, because of the high school area, too.
Is that what we're doing with C, that one?
Correct.
Okay, that's what we want.
So, they finished that, there's a little bit of an issue with the line there, but we got that resolved, so. Some of our fiber wires. Wasn't properly marked. That is nice. Inside of here, the middle school. Dale, does great work over there, just been working on the main cafeteria area. Turned out real nice, very, I mean, floor looks great. That has been a nice shiny wall.
It looks like it's a cool.
I know.
When I went through these pictures, I'm going, wow, that's amazing what maintenance can do.
So, just taking care of that, making it look nice and sharp, school year. This is a before picture of one eighth grade labs, I believe.
Computer lab.
Computer lab. We moved all those desks, and then we recovered the floor area in here. It's much more open, and then the next picture shows how we kind of reset it up. So, better easier space, the teacher's chair, if you've been in a room, there's maybe three feet that you have before, by the blackboard to the first desk, it's real narrow in there, so that's how we thought like that. And then just their work in there, setting up the classrooms, getting them all ready, very nice, hallways are great. Dale's. Yep, he's going to work over there. I need to reflect the before picture here, the flashes, the black part there was actually getting pulled away from the sidewall quite extensively. They had to cut, redo all the gravel and the flap there, so now they recapped it. So, potential issue, could have really bad, easily punctured a hole in that, got underneath the ladder. Now, it looks really nice, it's probably about 350 linear feet that they had repaired on the middle school. It just gets beaten by wind, that, in the west facing area, hits it pretty hard, so it's not too surprising that that happened. But kind of repaired, we found a couple other extra leaks that we also patched up while they were up there, so. A whole lot of options, besides, it's a newer building, looks great in there. I love LVT, it's really easy to work with, carpet squares, too, easy to maintain, manage. We're still quite in the process of, there, I think we're adding some more climbing wall boards. I know Brian and I are going to do that Wednesday, probably. That's what else about that, so it's definitely a two, three-person job, so. Yeah, this is an LVT floor, looks really nice, it stayed clean a long time, very durable, so.
Eli, could you talk for just a second about that type of floor, how's that different, what does that mean to maintenance?
So, LVT is, it lasts a lot longer, it's waterproof, it's stain resistant. You can just go over with a wet mop if you want, no stripping or waxing needed. And it's modular, too, so if you have a ding or something, something drops, something heavy on it, it takes a chip out, you just pull that one up, lay it on, it's really easy to maintain. Where I came from, I had the whole building had LVT, minus the first floor, had just polished concrete. Yeah, it's easy to install, it's to maintain, and a block proof.
And what do you call it?
It's LDT.
Luxury.
Luxury tile.
Okay, I haven't seen the tile, I see the plates, but not the tile, so.
They come from.
We sell it on our, on, on. Okay.
I think these ones are.
Usually like four foot by like eight inches.
Oh, okay.
You can get them squared, too, and variety.
It looks really good, the pattern that it has, it's almost like the stain concrete.
Yep.
Kind of what it looks like, but it doesn't, won't ever have that glossy finish, but what's nice is it really hides dirt really well. Where the, our shiny floors, they look great, especially right after you wax them, but once winter hits, after like.
The salt and.
805s, they're all.
They're all tore up. You can't really repair terezal, once it's damaged, it's damaged. This, you can always swap out tile, so.
And it's a lot, it's got a lot more, like, you drop something out.
Yeah, it's very durable.
It's, yeah.
And it has, almost, I think someone had a 15-year warranty or more, because it's 20, depending on who you go through. So, like, my last school, we had some defects in the floor, and then we found it was delaminating. They replaced every single square inch of the building for free. So, I'm like, well, instead of doing just parts of it, we'll just do everything, so we got a brand-new floor after two years of use. So, yeah, they're, we warranty, and we didn't pay a dime for it, still.
Okay, I have a question, ever since I've been here, you've been really good about maintaining roofs, we've been putting it on schedule and rotating. It seems like there was a lot more problems this year. Is there a reason why, or is it just we're being shown that the issue is, like, they were unscheduled, and then there were other issues that kind of cropped up with it?
Yeah, I don't know if there's more, I think we're doing a better job of keeping a track of it, probably showing some pictures of it more than we ever.
Okay, see, maybe that's, okay, that's what I was wondering, if it was just that, or?
I think the one thing Eli and I talked about, we do a good job of showing pictures when things are done, but we don't show the before pictures, we never remember to take those, so that helps put it in perspective, but. I think that, like, the dollars we spent on, on roofs have been pretty consistent.
Okay.
A year ago was a lot of asphalt, and we kind of caught up with that, so then I think we started directing some of it to the roofing projects.
Okay, and through the IRS, we have a contract where we're just rotating it.
Yeah, they put the specs together, and then we did it out through them.
Oh, okay, all right. Any other questions or comments, so Eli, or any of the admin services?
Yeah, I don't know if you should bring it up for the summer maintenance report or the maintenance plan, but looking at the high school parking lot and the speed bumps, I don't know if the speed bumps are put into our specifications, or if the company that put them in, that's theirs, and I understand with the snow plowing and things, you have to do that, but I just heard that they're going to put the old speed bumps that we had in the past back in addition to what we already have, because they don't think the ones that are there are going to work. And I'm just wondering, and community are wondering, how much we spent, and we do it right, and should we have, instead of speed bumps, should we have culvert out of it to help with the plowing, but to slow down traffic? Because those ones that are in there now really are insufficient.
Yeah, I think that, to answer your question, Paul, there was some preliminary discussion about the height of those speed pumps in terms of how, how much it would slow down the traffic through there. So, what was spec and what was done was, or what was done was what was spec. I think, I think what came out after the fact, which is a good discussion, is maybe they should have been a little taller to slow down traffic even more.
Or not as, or not as large of a footprint, because it disperses it so much, and unless you have a low-profile car, those aren't going to do anything for speed. But, and to put those other ones back in, you know, then why do we spend money in the first place on doing what we did?
Right, I think they could have, looking at them now, they probably could have been built higher, and that would have actually slowed them down a little more.
Or, or could we look at, instead of building it up, basically digging out four-inch depth by eight-inch wide? It's like going through a pothole, that wouldn't cause a problem with snow plowing, and it would slow people down.
Well, they can, I know they can cause a problem with snow plowing, I don't know that through municipalities that have them. So, it's kind of a 50/50, whether you have those or you have the others for snow plowing.
If you don't, if you don't put them as a parallel, it's not a problem with the snow plow, you angle them, and then the snow plow won't get hung up and tear them up.
Yeah, I saw a design fall down at Fort Sill that I actually wanted to explore or look into that, that is similar to what you're talking about, but where they did little scoops in a, you know, pattern of the asphalt. I don't know the depth of our asphalt base there going four inches, I don't know if it's more than a six-inch base, I don't know what it is, but long story short, we're not putting in the old big rubber ones.
Okay, because I heard, I heard we. Okay, because I heard, I heard we were going to put those back in. I'm like, well, and that was a waste.
I, I think that was an initial discussion there. I know Dan was looking at some rumble strips. Long story short is, yeah, we're not happy with the height that was spec'd out for the humps. But there, we looked into, can we add to it? And apparently you can't add to it, you'd have to take them out and put them back in. Because they put them to the height, which, you know, to be frank, was recommended. We're not happy with that height. They still did it according to contract. So we, we're exploring other ways to kind of mitigate that or create a little bit more of an awareness on the humps.
In, in theory, putting, you know, more on top might make some sense, but the problem is that they don't think it would adhere to what's there.
Right.
Kind of pop off, so. You know, I, I think it goes back to, you know, if we would have had a deeper discussion about how how much slowdown will that height have compared to different heights? We probably would have ultimately had a higher speed up, quite honestly.
The spec sheet said 15 to 20 miles an hour that was signed off on, which obviously is way too fast for that space. So it should have been five to 10 mile an hour speed humps put in. I think that would have been sufficient, but.
So who recommended those speed humps?
It was signed off by Mike. I don't want to throw him under the bus, but he was the one who signed off on with.
But, but there must have been a company though that recommended it, is what I'm assuming. Someone designed it?
Yeah, well, we use IRS as the consulting.
Okay.
But, but the discussion, or how, how much do you want to slow down the traffic?
Okay.
See, and I think if we would have had more input in that portion of it, we would have, so they designed it based on.
They, they designed it to slow it down to what the speed limit is of the parking lot, which is 15 miles an hour. To be frank.
People don't go speeding.
It should have been, in my opinion, we should have designed it to make them go even lower than the 15 miles an hour. But the municipality or the city can't enforce, you know, someone going over 15 miles an hour in the parking lot. So I don't know, and when that discussion was had, I think that's why they pegged it at 15 miles an hour.
Okay. Well, thank you for the pictures and the very thorough reports. Does anyone have any questions for anyone?
The only other piece I just highlight within the agenda is, is a copy of our maintenance plan and kind of the status and all the projects that we did. So you can go, you know, go through all of those, but you can kind of see what the status is in terms of the actual projects, which are highlighted in purple. And most, everything is complete or scheduled to get completed. And I think the last big project is the LED lights at the pool area of the high school, which is September, is that right Eli?
Still in September.
Right. So, well, and a lot of our buildings are, we have the energy efficiency stamps. Is, are all of ours going to be there now or not?
I don't know if we'll get the stamps, but in terms of LED lighting, we'll have everything done. Stereo and internal except for some areas of the high school.
High school's the last building to be completed with LEDs.
But even a lot of the high school's already done.
All the new portions and additions.
Right.
But it'll be 100% LED.
That'd be great. Do we know anything more about the solar?
They started today.
Oh, okay.
They got part of the bases in for the panels.
Okay.
So they did a lot of digging today. They got all the poles in the ground. I'm guessing tomorrow they'll have actual panels up. I know they're running wires too. I think they ran some wires today. They have the bases for the actual panels are.
Alright, thank you.
I think the goal was they'll have that finished by the county fair.
Nine days.
Their whole of us getting material in. I think they had the panels ordered for a while, but it took a bit, it's actually good house.
Originally, they thought they'd start earlier.
They did, yeah.
No, it'll be when they do. Alright, thank you. Next, we go on to recommendations of the district administrator.
Alright, first up is the personnel sheet. Thank you, Eli. And we have a number of personnel items. We have the resignation of Ashley U. Alexander, who served as the EL teacher over at the middle school. We want to thank her for her service. She recently got married and moved to Milwaukee area, accepted a position close to there. We have the resignation of Tamara Nolini, who served as an occupational, over at the Options as a music teacher. I'm sorry, not as a.
I was going to say.
The resignation of Christina Taylor, who served as a Jackson Special Education Assistant. The transfer of Ellie DeBeau to the EL teacher position, restructuring that. She serves as the reading specialist at the middle school currently. So she's going to be doing a split EL reading specialist. She's certified in both. Transfer of Don Kautowski or Konski, sorry, to Westside Cook. Transfer of Rose Divin to Tivitts Cook position. Transfer of Joan Schran to Tivitts Cook position. Transfer of Robert McCabe to Westside Special Ed Teaching Assistant. And appointment of Beth Burdell as a middle school social studies teacher. And appointment of Karen Cruden as a Options music teacher. Appointment of Patrick Schaefer as a Jackson Custodian. Katie Seaver as a Tivitts Teaching Assistant. Mary Kruger as a Westside Cook. Sandra Pfeifer as a Westside Cook. Mary Bass as a high school girl swim assistant coach. Annabelle Coecroft is a high school cheerleading assistant coach. And Brenna Berry is a high school cheerleading assistant coach. We want to congratulate all of them for joining the team.
Questions? Any other questions?
I'm going to approve the personal recommendation sheet for August 23rd, 2021, including new employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background check and district candidate drug screen as presented.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve the personnel recommendation sheet as presented. We'll call it, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Several school gifts, do you have any to make?
I don't have any school gifts to present this evening.
COVID seems to have kind of slowed that down.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, because I think people aren't as involved. They are in the classroom, they are seeing things, they think that is.
Yeah, it used to be rare that we didn't have.
Something.
Something, right, yeah.
But we appreciate everything we get.
Of course.
Any announcements?
I do not have any specific announcements. I have a new teacher retention will start this week on Wednesday.
I think, is it upstairs?
I'll have to double check. I believe we need it upstairs.
It's in the dewy room.
Okay, thank you. Feels like a larger space, probably just because there's tables, but I don't know. It feels better.
But upstairs.
It's not, but it feels better. Yes.
Okay.
Upstairs, eight o'clock.
Alright, then I guess.
And our new student board reps will join us.
Oh, next.
I believe one after school starts, so first meeting in September.
Okay.
We met with one of them today. The other one couldn't join the meeting because the tennis matches got delayed. Yeah, we'll have two new grade reps for this year and they're excited to get started.
Thanks. Shall we consider a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
You have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn, motion in second to adjourn, all those, we'll call it.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Thank you everyone, thank you for coming to the audience here.
Have a good night, everyone.